All right, I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting of Salem, the special meeting for Salem Urban Renewal Agency for September 23, 2013. Would the Recorder please call the roll? Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Tesler?
Present.
Member Nanki?
Here.
Member Claussen?
Here.
Member Dickey?
Here.
Member Thomas?
Here.
Member Benars?
Here.
Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll now have the approval of our special meeting agenda. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Tesler, to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the action item. Member Bennett, do you have a motion for us?
Madam Mayor, I'd ask you to call on Member Dickey.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Dickey. Yes, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? Seeing that, oh, excuse me, Counselor Dickey.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to say that I'm very happy that this property is selling. For people who are watching this or in the audience here, this is that little odd-shaped piece of property that's just north of the railroad, kind of overpass tunnel on Portland Road, right next to the railroad tracks. And it's a really odd-shaped piece of property with really odd access, and I know the city's had it for sale for many, many years. And I'm really happy that someone has seen its potential and they're going to be taking it, and hopefully over the next several years, it'll be taking shape and we'll see something, a development go on there. So I'm really pleased about this.
Wonderful. Further comments? All right, we'll vote on the motion that's before us, who accept staff recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I see no further business to come before the agency, so we are adjourned. All right, we'll now call to order the Salem City Council meeting for September 23, 2013. Would the Recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
We'll have the approval of additions and deletions. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding the agendas? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. It's time for counsel comment, and I do know that there are counselors with some comments this evening. Counselor Nanki, you had your hand up before we came into the room.
Before we even got here.
All right.
Yes, actually, I have several. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't necessarily go in chronological order, but we had the Natawa Conference last week, National Association of Teleconference Organizations and Agencies, if I recall, it gets messed up on the end always, in Orlando. Fantastic on what some of the folks are doing around the country to promote their cities. I'm going to be sharing a lot of stuff with CCTV, and I'll forward some links to folks. If anyone's ever heard of Flula and seen what he does, the city of Allen, Texas hired him for a weekend, and he's been all over the Internet doing a lot of interesting things, very humorous and well-done, a lot of innovation across the spectrum. And so I'll be writing up all my notes from that and forwarding them on. We have the League of Oregon Cities Conference this week in Portland. On Friday, we had the Airport X out at the airport simulated airplane crash, made up a bunch of kids with moolah to make them look like they'd been seriously injured, and then the Salem Fire as well as, well, there was a ton of people out there. We had the Community Emergency Response Team folks out doing volunteer work. I led the safety team on that. We had ambulances from other jurisdictions. Salem Hospital took many, many ambulances. We even shot some out to Dallas. Almost hit the golden hour. We were close to it to basically have everybody transported out in an hour, and we're able to wrap up out on the end of the tarmac. We used a school bus for the fuselage. Somehow it lost its wings.
[laughing]
But it was fantastic, thanks to everyone who was involved with that. Week and a half ago, Richard from Public Works was down the end of my block. We had a water main break, and so I got to watch him seal that up in fairly short order. We were without water a little bit, so my wife encouraged me to go down and find out what the schedule was.
[laughing]
But they knocked her out pretty quick. It was good to see how fast they were able to get down there. We left out, that was a couple of days after the rain, so the gravels were really saturated, and they had to bring a vac truck out. On Saturday, we went up and, as part of the North Sandia and Watershed Council, toured the new Minto Fish Collection Facility, where essentially they'll capture Chinook and Steelhead, move them up above Detroit. And then we had a presentation on their status of mixing the temperatures out of the top and bottom of Detroit reservoir. That'll be coming up in the next couple of years, because that temperature really affects the fish in the lower, underneath the dam, as they come back in to make sure that they hatch on time and we don't kill them. As well as downstream passage, and how you get those fish once they rear up in the tributaries up above Detroit, get them back down underneath so that they can be caught by anglers and go do what they do.
[laughing]
So, yeah, busy last couple of weeks.
You have been busy.
Somebody has to.
Sounds like you've been happy.
And one last one. We met today on the pedestrian access between Monkers and Ricky Street that we talked about. It looks like Marion County's going to pay for the asphalt to go down. We'll be chopping the wall out. I had my landscaper from work go out and meet with Marion. We had a real nice presentation on what that will actually look like, so we're hoping to have that done by end of October, a lot of the stuff. So Marion's being happier.
Wonderful. That's wonderful news. All right, other counselor comment. Counselor Benars?
It was my honor today to play in the very first Mike McLaren golf tournament. As those who know Mike, Mike, I have an extreme appreciation to Mike who came to this community to play baseball. But the biggest thing that I rely upon Mike isn't necessarily where he stood in the business world, but so much that he was about leadership development. One of the things that brings me and so many other people to this council and councils yet to come. A card was handed out, we call them McLarenisms, because there are many, many quotes of wisdom that come from this man. I just wanted to repeat just the one short sentence here. "We need to strive for higher level of excellence in this state and not ever settle for the status quo that equates to mediocrity." I'll see you on the field, Mike McLaren. Anyway, it's an honor today. It was a wonderful, wonderful, yet wet day on the golf course, so, but fun.
Wonderful. Other comments? Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you. Yeah, about a week and a half ago, Counselor Tesler, Counselor Thomas and I, along with two other women city counselors from Kaiser, got to speak to the League of Women Voters' Fall Brunch to a packed house there. And it was just a really great conversation that we had, and we had a lot of discussion about community engagement and being informed and that kind of thing, and talked about the issues that are facing our cities. It was just a really great opportunity to be able to have that kind of dialogue with the public that we don't always get to have. So it started out being, you know, what's it like being a woman in politics, but really boiled down to a lot of, you know, how can we engage with you better? And so we had a lot of questions like that, so it was great.
Wonderful. And Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last council meeting talked about how the region had approved 1.06 million dollars for the final funding package of the Minno Island Bridge. And the paper, I think, ran a story today or yesterday about it's on its way for state approval later this year. Just wanted, for viewers and anybody in the audience, if you're a supporter of us getting the final approval on the funding for this bridge between essentially where the Equable is and Minno Island, write a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission in support of that, because they will have the final vote, I think, in December. So Friends of Two Bridges has been a great advocate, Gallagher's Fitness downtown or the Courthouse. Even if you just write out on a napkin, please, the more, this is highly competitive sometimes, and the more we show our support at the local level, the more we receive state and federal funding for these kinds of projects. So write a letter in support of the Minno Bridge and get it to Gallagher's or Courthouse Fitness Club.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I understand there was a dance on top of the Chameca de Parcade?
There was, two weekends ago, and I heard it went very well, that they were very pleased with the result. And that was a fundraiser as well for the bridge.
For the bridge, wonderful. Okay, further counsel comment? Thank you very much. We have time for public comment, and I think we have some people signed up. Thank you. Greg Fabos and Mike Shadbolt? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening. And you have three minutes. The red light, the orange light comes on at the end of two minutes, and the red light at the end of three.
Thank you. My name is Greg Fabos. I live in Ward Four, specifically in the Cinnamon Hill neighborhood. I am here this evening to represent the citizens of the Cinnamon Hill neighborhood and request that the proposed development, known as the Sunnyside subdivision, Cinnamon Hill, Cinnamon subdivision, off of Sunnyside Road, be called up by the council or by our alderman, whoever can make that motion. I'm not speaking just for myself. We have been in touch with Counselor Claussen. We have been to the Cigna meeting and have had a little bit of movement with our concerns on the issue, however, nothing specific has been given to us regarding the issues that we would like to have this called up for a future meeting, for a future public hearing. I am not alone in bringing this forward. I have a petition right here that is signed by 30 Cinnamon Hill residents, most of them who live to the immediate north of the proposed development. We are very concerned that a number of trees will be taken down. We are very concerned that the city of Salem is under the state-approved minimum for tree canopy. These trees are significant in size. They're mostly white oaks, and we think that this has to be looked at on a much more serious level than it has been looked at at the present time. The developer is going to be saving some trees, however, there is a south and an east conservation easement that is a part of this proposed development. We are asking that a north conservation easement be put into the plan as well to protect the trees, to protect our neighborhood, and also to protect the area from excessive stormwater runoff, which we do not feel has been adequately addressed in the city-approved plan. So we are, I have this, I'd like to enter this petition into the record, if I may, to show that there's significant concern, and the neighbors are very concerned about this, and we would really like to implore the council to hear this cause so that we may have citizen representation and the city to represent us as well as taxpayers, and that the developer work with us to make this a cohesive plan as opposed to one that has some major disagreement in it.
All right, thank you very much. Counselors, questions? Counselor Tesler?
Thanks for coming down. I have a question for you. We received an email, and the email states that the Neighborhood Association Cigna met with the neighbor, the developer, and the developer agreed to remove 58 trees from the maybe cut list. They say that this was a good compromise. The board approved it, and the neighbors agreed to it. So are you representing the neighbors that didn't agree to it?
No. I'm representing the neighborhood's concern for preservation of these trees, as well as the other issue regarding stormwater runoff. But regarding what you have talked about, regarding those 58 trees, I have sent numerous emails to the folks over at Cigna asking what 58 trees? We don't know. And there's been nothing given to me in writing, or any of us, I mean, in the Cinnamon Hill neighborhood, in writing. And the way that it's been stated, I really hate to say this, but we have the emails to back it up, is that if we don't go ahead and pursue our option to call this up, this offer may be taken off of the table. And I really don't think that's a good-faith offer. So we're asking that this be put into writing, into public hearing, so that the citizens have a representation of, number one, knowing what trees that they are talking about; number two, are they really serious in doing this, or are they offering it to us to have us go away into the night and not having any legal ground to stand on afterwards? So, I mean, put yourselves in our place. We don't have anything of any specificity to, you know, look at and put into our hands. There's nothing that is backing up this offer. It is an interesting step. We are very interested in it, but in attempting to get more details, we've come up empty.
Okay. All right, other counselor questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Shadbolt. My wife and I own a residence on Cinnamon Hill Drive Southeast, and I simply want to thank the council for the opportunity to focus for a few moments, and I emphasize a few, on the Dirks and Sunnyside subdivision, which was recently approved by the planning administrator. As landowners and taxpayers, we have concerns, I would say, on three broad issues. One is the preservation of trees, especially the white oak trees along the northern boundary of the property. There has been indication by the landowner that he's willing to go further than the planning document indicates. But again, to reiterate what Mr. Fabos said, we have nothing in writing, we don't have anything like a conservation easement, which I think would give us a great deal of comfort regarding that important concession on the part of the landowner. But we also have concerns regarding stormwater runoff. We think the stormwater runoff issue is an issue that perhaps is bigger than a lot of people understand. There's still disagreement about climate change, despite the fact that in the western United States, we've seen tremendous rainfall events this summer. Many of them have occurred very close. Two weeks ago, Thursday, Turner experienced, I believe, about five inches of rain in a very short period of time. And we think that those factors need to be taken into consideration when issues such as preservation of the tree canopy are at stake. The last issue we have regards density. We feel, and we know that there is disagreement on this point, but we feel that 137 houses on 30.9 acres is an excessive level of density. We think that a lot of the issues could be dealt with more easily if the density was reduced. And we also believe that there are great economic opportunities for lot sizes larger than the generally 5,000, 6,000, 7-foot, or 7,000 square foot lot sizes that are called, that are described in the planning document. Obviously, there's a great deal more that I could say, but I think we're going to leave that until a future date, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
All right, are there questions from counselors? Counselor Claussen?
Thank you. We had an opportunity to talk earlier today on the phone, and I was looking at the staff report again, and as I had mentioned to you, the stormwater stuff, it definitely is a big concern in South Salem, especially after the last couple flooding events we've had in the last couple of years. But as such, this council has set a precedent on previous land use decisions to double the detention requirement for development in South Salem, and I did look, and that requirement is here for this development as well. I'm just, did you notice that, or have you been made aware of that? Or I don't know what more we would be looking for.
You know, I think this has come down, at least in my experience, fairly rapidly. It was only in August that we learned of the density of the project, 137 houses. So frankly, I have not had a complete opportunity to go through the document and all the references that the planning document refers to. So I guess my comment would be that the issue, I think, is of such great importance that a little more time to focus on issues such as stormwater management, so that the neighbors have a greater level of comfort, would be time well spent.
Thank you.
All right, further questions by counselors? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming this evening and testifying.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following poll by Counselor Nanki of item 3.3D.
3.3D as in dog?
Yes.
Did you say?
Yes.
D, thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar, with the exception of the item polled of 3.3D. Is there discussion? All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have two public hearings this evening, three public hearings this evening. We're going to start with 4A. And is there a staff report, staff presentation?
No, Mayor.
No, because it's a continuation? All right. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, if I may, the city and the city council received a letter from the applicant this week requesting that they get, provided seven days for final written argument.
Uh huh.
And I think Counselor Benars can make a motion to that effect.
Are you ready for a motion, Counselor Benars? Thank you.
That I am. I would like to move to close the public record for testimony and to allow the applicant seven days until September 30 at 5:00 PM to submit the applicant's final written argument and to continue the hearing for purposes of deliberations to October 14.
Is there discussion? All right, it's been moved by Counselor Benars and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Our second item for a public hearing has to do with the street name change. And Counselor Thomas, do you have a motion to introduce this? We do.
The city reporter will-
Thank you, sorry.
Okay.
And who's going to make the staff report?
There needs to be an announcement before the hearing. The city reporter will make-
I'm sorry. Thank you. The city reporter will now introduce the public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony for the purpose of considering adoption of ordinance bill number 3513 approving a street name change from Learning Lane Northeast to Aguilas Court Northeast. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The city council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
All right. Would you like to present the staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, counselors, and I'm Amy Dixon. This is public hearing to rename Learning Lane Northeast to Aguilas Court Northeast. The public improvement project realigning Market Street and Swiegel Road near 45th created a remnant street. Six lots take access from the street, two are city-owned properties, three are single-family dwellings, two of which are rentals, and then Swiegel Elementary School. In June, staff processed a request to name the street Learning Lane Northeast. At the time, the hearings officer was the reviewing authority. With the new code for street naming and renaming, the reviewing authority is city council with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. After the hearings officer decision, the city manager learned that this was not the preferred name of the Neighborhood Association and Swiegel Elementary School. The preferred name was Aguilas. Aguilas means eagles in Spanish, to honor their mascot, Swiegel Eagles. Aguilas was not selected based on comments received from WLMAT 911 of the potential delay of emergency services due to the pronunciation and spelling difficulty. The city manager determined that the benefits of honoring LNA and Swiegel Elementary School preferred street name outweighed the possible pronunciation and spelling difficulty. There are two items of approval criteria. First, does the street meet the Salem Revise Code, Chapter 255.015? The first part is the name in general. It does not exist in Polk or Marion Counties. The name does not sound like another name. It is not deliberately misspelled, a pun, or a slang, and it's not a numbered street. Therefore, it meets the standards of the naming standards. The next portion is the type of street. And it is not a through street. It has six lots abutting the street, and it is designated a court since it does not have a street on the opposing side of the intersection of Market Street. Therefore, it meets the street naming standards for a cul-de-sac. The final portion of this, of meeting the chapter requirements, is the address district. The street is in the northeast district and is designated northeast. Therefore, it meets the address district standards. The final criteria is, is it in the best interest of the city to rename the street? The Neighborhood Association conducted an outreach in the initial naming of the street. The citizens living in the area and Swiegel Elementary students overwhelmingly selected a name representing their school and the community, Aguilas. Staff contacted WLMAT 911 to get a better understanding of their concerns submitted during the initial process. They indicated that with any new street, there is a potential of delay in response time due to it being a new street. They went further and indicated that there are other streets that are not spelled as they sound, like Tarmigan in West Salem, starts with a P, Rubitz in South Salem that starts with a H. Operators do become familiar with these streets, and the potential of delay in services is We did receive comments from the fire department, building and safety division, public works, and Salem Kaiser District that they did not have any concerns with renaming this street. Therefore, Planning Commission did discuss the renaming- Therefore, Planning Commission did discuss the renaming of Learning Lane to Aguilas at their September 17th meeting. They determined that the best interests of the city would to, would be to recommend that council approve the renaming of the street to Aguilas Court Northeast. And therefore, staff also recommends that this change occurs. And that completes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing, and then we'll address questions to staff following any testimony. Do we have anyone signed up? The public hearing is now open, and there's no one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that did come this evening to testify that didn't get a chance to sign up? No, not seeing anyone, then the public hearing is closed. Oh, not yet. Staff. Questions for staff? Councilors, do you have questions? Councilor Tesler.
How is this pronounced? Is it Aguilas? Aguilas, right?
Peter Fernandez, your resident Spanish language expert.
There are others here, too.
It's Aguilas.
Aguilas. Okay. I got you.
That's that parcel of names. Yes.
Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Nanki.
Just a comment. We already have a lot of streets in West Salem in one particular area that are named Eagles. They have Eagles names. So I hope we can support the school and the neighborhood with a different version of the word Eagle and not, and make it so it's not confusing for the, so I support the name change.
All right. Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's the exact same place I was going because I had asked originally, and we have more Eagle street names than almost are allowed inside of the city currently. So there was really no other options for them to have their mascot identified.
All right. Other comments or questions by councilors? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. Then the public hearing is closed. And let's see. Councilor Thomas, do you have a motion to introduce?
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Thomas and seconded by Councilor Dickey to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And our third public hearing has to do with the Consolidated Annual Performance Report. Does the recorder introduce this? Would you please?
Yes. The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the Fiscal Year 2012-2013 Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan Annual Performance Report, which includes the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Programs.
All right. And we have a staff report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name's Rena Peck. I'm the Federal Programs Manager for the Urban Development Department. Before you tonight is the 2012-2013 Consolidated Annual Performance Report. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that the city report to report on the performance of the projects and the programs that received Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds, and Home Investment Partnership Funds during the 2012-2013 program year. The Consolidated Annual Performance Report identifies the CDBG and the Home Investment Partnership Funds, projects, and programs as a result of the council adopted 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan. CDBG and home funds are intended to meet the needs of individuals and families earning 80% or less of the median family income. These needs were met by addressing homelessness, economic and community development, affordable housing options, and revitalization of local neighborhoods. This year, the total CDBG and home funds expended was approximately $2.6 million. HUD requires that the city file a report within 45 days of the end of the fiscal year. The report provides feedback to HUD regarding how the city is meeting its goals that are outlined in the 2009-2014 Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan. The city is in year four of the five-year plan. As you may notice, the Goal III, number proposed versus actual client served, has a really widespread, that they proposed 313 clients to be served and actually only served 35. In fiscal year 13, excuse me, 2011 and 12, 2012-13, and 2013-14, council awarded funds to the Salem Housing Authority for the rehabilitation of Parkway Apartments. That project was slated to be completed in 2012, but because of funding, or lack of funding, they were unable to complete the project. So next year, for the 13-14 annual report, you'll see that those numbers will have changed. Tenant-Based Rental Assistance and the Antrim Housing Assistance Program provides rental assistance to households that meet all of the qualifications. Merit and Interface Network provided opportunities for low-income individuals to realize a dream of becoming business owners. Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network collaborated with local churches to provide a place for families to find a warm meal and a safe place to sleep. During the day, Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network maintains a day shelter that helps parents find employment and housing. And the YWCA Salem Outreach Shelter, we provide funding for case management that helps those families also find a place, safe place to stay. On this slide, you'll see three different things are represented. The first one, the Piñata Planet, that was a project that Interfaith Hospitality, no, I'm sorry, Interfaith provided technical assistance to help them start a new business. Their business is located on Lancaster, and they build and create all kinds of interesting Piñatas. The second one, Raffens, in the middle, that business owner provided or received technical assistance from the Merit Program to also start their own business. That business is located in the downtown core. And the last one, Salem Poke Food Share, or the Marion Poke Food Share, we also provided CDBG funds to them to acquire and build their food disorder. On this slide, you'll see Island Girls. This was another Merit Program. These clients received, again, technical assistance to write business plans and currently this year started a, their booth at the Wednesday Market. And the last one, it was an Interfaith project as well. This gentleman opened his business on the corner of High and Union, and I believe is doing very well. HUD requires a 15-day comment period to allow citizens the opportunity to provide comments on the performance outcomes that were stated earlier. This comment period expires on September 25th at 5:00 PM, and at this time, staff has received no comments. And if we received comments after this public hearing, staff will make sure that council receives copies of those comments and staff's response. Staff recommends approval and adoption of the 2012-2013 Consolidated Annual Performance Report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone signed up to testify?
Sure.
All right. There are no, there are no signatures on the signup sheet. Was there anyone in the audience that did want to testify on this matter? All right. Then I will close the public hearing, and we have questions of staff. First, Councilor Bennett, and then Councilors Clem, and then Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there anything associated with these dollars that require a maintenance of effort by the city once you start down, you know?
Yes. So two things. So CDBG does require that we, on an annual basis, at the end of the fiscal year, do a desk or a physical review of the program. So for instance, with Merit and Interface, we go out at the end of the program year, usually about August, and we take a look at all of their client files to make sure that they're meeting all of the federal requirements. And then we also take a look at their audits, or their QuickBooks, or whatever it is, to make sure that they're, as an organization, also financially sound.
I'm, I'll tell you what I'm looking at, is on page 29, at the top of the page, is customers of the physical and virtual libraries. It's a city program, and I'm not sure I understand what's going on with this one. Do I?
I'm not sure about virtual libraries.
Well, I'll tell you what this says, and maybe I misunderstand it, but in 2012, the basis, the measuring number, I assume it's number of people or uses, is 985,537. And in fiscal year 2013, it's 878,300.
Does this have to do with the library?
Yeah. Am I misunderstanding what you were covering here?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not covering anything with the library.
Well, that's the one that caught my attention in the packet I got. Should I, am I in the wrong pew on this one, then, manager?
I'm looking for the reference that you were checking down.
Yeah. Page 29 is what I'm looking at.
This is the subject on the budget information.
Okay. Maybe I'm misunderstanding it then.
You're in the wrong church.
I'm in the wrong church. Okay.
I was worried I was missing something.
No, I just, I'm looking at this thing, and I'm trying to follow this, and I was thinking, this is really interesting. I can't find any of it. All I can find is this library number. I'll talk about the library number later. Thank you.
That's a different document that he's looking at. Okay. All right. That was just a test.
Well, I flunked that test.
No, you did. Okay. Now, let's see. Where were we in the lineup? Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rena, the Goal III, the 35 out of 313, I think I'm asking a question we're all wondering about. What are the projects, and what percent are we going to get to out of that 313? Because 35 is just a hair over 10%.
Right. So any of the projects that were not, so when an organization applies, they tell us, okay, we're expecting, you know, to serve so many clients, whatever that number may be. And so at the beginning of the year, we have kind of a rough estimate. And we compare that to our consolidated plan five-year goals. So anywhere within that five years, we can be either ahead or below whatever that annual number that we anticipate. It's just that the end of the five years is where we kind of try to land. So with the affordable housing, we had not only Parkway, but we also had the Housing Authority's Security Deposit Program, and some of the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Funds that we give to Mid-Wilamette Valley Community Action Agency. Those three things did not close out in the 2012 program year as of June 30th. So all of those numbers, and we're looking at probably about 400 people, actually, should be counted in next year's numbers. So we can only report what's completed as of June 30th, and so anything after that will be kind of cumulative in the next year.
Any idea how many more dwelling units we're opening up for folks for affordable housing, then?
I don't have that number, but I can do some research, if you'd like. Until we go out for applications, you know, I'm not really sure how many more clients there are.
So 313, is that the dwelling units or applicants?
That's dwelling units.
Okay. So-
It's kind of the same, right? We're serving households.
So Parkway will be worth so many?
So we'll have some from Parkway. We'll have some from the Security Deposit Program. We'll have some from Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Programs and Antrim Housing Assistance.
And when will we update this again? Next, a year from now?
It'll be next year. A year from this, from September.
Okay. I just want to watch this one carefully. We've got the money, it just seems odd that-
It's just a matter of the cycle. So like, for instance, Security Deposit, they leased up late in the year, so they weren't able to spend all of their money by June 30th. So they requested an extension of their agreement. So we couldn't count any of those clients that they've served even up until June 30th. Because we can't count them until the project's completed.
You'll keep this posted.
Yes, very much.
Councilor Benars?
Thank you for giving such a great report. I wanted to center a little bit on costs. To me, it's, these are lives, but they're also costs to these programs. I'm impressed by the $47,900 that have been spent in Goal Number Four, the revitalization of low-income neighborhoods, where literally, because of Marion Poke Food Share repack, 113,000 individuals were served. I was a little dismayed to see 207,000 being spent on Goal Three with only 35 individuals so far. So I reiterate what Councilor Clem had said before, but I am impressed with Goal Four. I like to see that kind of thing, where there's a good impact per dollar that is being spent.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Great report. I am curious about the businesses that you've provided technical assistance to. I mean, I think that's fantastic that you've got some businesses that have been able to get off the ground, been able to help the Marion Poke Food Share. Do you provide ongoing technical assistance? Do you just send them off and let them fly? Or how does that work after a period of time? Can they come back and get more assistance? Either, not necessarily monetary assistance, but if they need help with some particular aspect of their business?
So the way our economic development programs are working, the Merit and Interface, is we provide technical assistance funds to those organizations, and then they provide assistance to the client. So we only provide assistance once to that client, but the clients are served multiple years through those businesses, or those organizations.
All right. Are there further questions? Councilor Tesler?
Oh, I just wanted to comment that, you know, we have such a terrible problem of homelessness. And, you know, you look at how much money, I mean, $207,000. It's really not that much money, when you think about it. And look how many people you helped. You helped almost 2,000 people. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people. And so I really have to congratulate you, you know, penny-pinching. It's kind of sad, you know, that's all the money that we get, is $200,000, because it's really nothing, when you really think about it. You know, it's sort of like, we're going to end homelessness, but we're going to end it with a penny at a time. But I really, I just, once again, just wanted to say, you know, that's a lot of people for $200,000. So good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And keep up the good work. I wish they would give us more money than this, because it's just, it's a horrible, it's just a horrible shortfall.
Yeah, it really is. When you think about the needs of our community, and our community isn't as bursed off as some communities, but $200,000 is just nothing. And then $200,000 for the other items on here, and then some of them are, you know, revitalized low-income neighborhoods, you know, $47,000. Yeah, that's, what, one house, maybe? You know? So anyway, just, I just wish they would give us a little more money, because we could obviously leverage it like you have. So, you know, kudos to you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Further comments from councilors? All right. We'll now close the public hearing. And Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Dickey to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
That's right.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now move to special orders of business and the item on the agenda, the filing of the initiative petition. Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. In preparation for a decision regarding enactment of initiative petition 001-2013-I-P at our October 14th meeting, I move to direct staff to bring to that meeting a staff report analyzing the fiscal and service impacts of the initiative on the city and recommendations to the council for options to address the downtown parking district budget, including potential cuts to operations, capital expenses, and alternative funding sources.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Clem. Is there discussion? Councilor Bennett?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, my intention in this motion is, number one, to alert council that I would expect we will move enactment of the petition language at our October 14th meeting, and that we be fully informed on its impacts in advance of that meeting. This is an important issue in the city. It will have impact on downtown business particularly, so I think that we need to have a full understanding of kind of how we're going to do this. This is a change going back to the '70s, prior to parking meters downtown, and I think that it's a, and then since parking meters, we've tried it again, gone to two-hour. We've sort of been all over the map on parking, and I think it's, it's an issue that needs to be looked at. We saw a petition brought to us within excess of at least- We saw a petition brought to us with in excess of at least the required number, between five and six thousand signatures of registered voters in the city, and then an additional three thousand to four thousand, I can't remember the numbers exactly, of additional people who expressed their opinion that, not surprisingly, by the way, that when given the option of not free or free, people chose free. And I think it's important that we give everyone a chance to experience free, unlimited parking in our downtown area to kind of find out how this works. But there are a lot of factors involved that I think the staff needs to go over. Particularly, there, I think we're going to have to be very cautious about employee enforcement, making sure that this idea gets absolutely the best opportunity it can have to work. And then we'll make a batch of decisions during our budget process as to how we will, where we will cut in order to underwrite parking downtown, if that's what the staff finds. I mean, I'm assuming they will find that, but I think this is the best way to go at this point.
All right, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too agree with the maker of the motion that folks want to try it. Let's see what happens. But I think more than, more than the citizens who signed the petition, or in addition to the citizens who signed the petition, as well as studying us and us taking the time to study the fiscal impact on our work in downtown and how it affects downtown, the voices I haven't heard from yet are from downtown businesses as a whole. And I'm concerned we're going into the holiday season. I don't know that there's been a reaction from the downtown businesses. And, you know, parking was intended to do a number of things, parking management, parking enforcement. One of those things was to create business by rotating people in somewhat of a desired fashion, the way they want to shop and where they want to shop, by causing parking turns, by causing rotations of cars. With the free parking, I can go in for a cup of coffee and be there from seven in the morning till midnight. And that retail store that I parked in front of could, you know, may be harmed. Parking was intended to rotate people so that everybody had a shot at shopping. I would just ask that maybe with this information that staff provide, if they could do a survey of the downtown businesses to see if they prefer during the holiday periods, and only the holiday periods, I guess the next one is Christmas, or this coming holiday, November fifteenth through January third. They've hired employees or they're hiring employees, they've ordered inventory, they've made plans on a certain amount of folks coming in and out of the doors, and to change things suddenly, which it sounds like we're going to do. But I kind of want to have some idea of what that impact is. And so could staff do a survey to the downtown businesses to ask them during the holiday periods, you know, do you want us to go back to what you liked last year, and that was that four-hour parking limit? Or do you just want free parking? And I'm just hoping that maybe we can get sort of a sense whenever it's done from the downtown businesses, what they think of this free, or do they want some sort of limits, at least during the holiday season, so that everybody has a chance to get downtown and shop? We want to support our downtown. And free parking sounds really great, but I'm concerned that, you know, we ought to at least engage with the businesses at some point in time to see what they all think. So understand petitions were signed in some of the businesses, but not all of them had a chance to comment on it. So if staff could incorporate that in the information?
We can.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from counselors? I have a couple of comments personally that I'd like to make. And one is that in no way does this decision or this action or contemplation by the council this evening reflect poorly on the Parking Task Force that met for almost a year and thought very carefully and with clear research and deliberation on a number of recommendations for parking in various areas of the city. And they made, I believe it was a total of seven recommendations. And the downtown parking recommendation was only one of the seven. The other six are being enacted or will be enacted as is appropriate administratively. And we certainly don't want to diminish at all our thanks to the people that did work on the Parking Task Force, and the Parking Task Force is still constituted and will still be advising us from time to time. So I wanted to make that note. And the second thing is that we started our whole parking discussion regarding downtown with trying to find practices and procedures that really put the parking decision into the hands of the customers. And I'm still firmly committed in a system that will do that and that will encourage them to come downtown and to shop and do business downtown. And I'll be very anxious to hear what the business owners say after this initial period of time. But I would also put a call out to the public that, to let us know what the experience is. Let us know, how does this really work for them? When they're able to park downtown for unlimited periods of time, are they truly able to find a place to park? And then during the holiday time, if we go to the four-hour period of time, I'd like to have some feedback from the public as well about that. And so I'll be encouraging the public to really be in touch with us as well through this. So those are my comments. Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. I just want to make the comment that the motion on the floor is to have staff bring us back a fiscal analysis. And we are not making any decision on, and the options for what we can do with that petition. I just, I want to be really clear about that because it sounded like I heard some intimation that this is what we were going to do, we were moving ahead with the petition itself, and that is not at all what we're discussing tonight. So I just want to make that really clear for the public. We are not and have not made any decision on that. We're just getting information.
Thanks for that. That's a good clarification point. Any further discussion or comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor. And Counselor Bennett, would you like to repeat your motion, please?
I know.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Would you please? Thank you.
In preparation for a decision regarding enactment of Initiative Petition zero-zero-one-dash-two-zero-one-three-dash-I-P at our October fourteenth meeting, I move to direct staff to bring to that meeting a report analyzing the fiscal and service impacts of the initiative on city, on the city and recommendations to the council for options to address the downtown parking district budget, including potential cuts to operations, capital expenses, and alternative funding sources.
Thank you. And that was a motion made by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The second item under special orders of business tonight will be called Five B, and that's the, has to do with collective bargaining with the city professional firefighters. And our city manager has an announcement.
I do. Mayor, I just wanted to call to the council's attention. If you saw staff walking in and out of their room, it's because they've realized that incorrect numbers were here. It's consistent with what we have within the authority, but I want to clarify to council so that you see that. The costs for year one and year two on your staff report are correct. The next line of four-seventy-five, nine-forty, and six thousand seventy-five is in error. Your three numbers are correct. The total is, for the three years, six hundred eighty-two thousand two fifty for general fund and for EMS fund, fifteen thousand zero forty. For a total of six ninety-seven, two ninety. And that's what we had previously discussed and it was within our authority, but we realized there was a scripter's error here on this report.
All right, are there any questions regarding that? Okay. I believe that this item was pulled by Counselor Nanki.
Yes.
Counselor Nanki, would you like to introduce a motion or?
No, I'd actually love for Counsel President Bennett to make a motion, though.
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Yes, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first off, let me just apologize to staff for keeping them here, but there's an issue inside of this that is near and dear to my heart that I figured I should speak to rather than just registering a no vote and having people not understand why I voted in opposition to the staff recommendation. And essentially, it comes back to the fact that we're bound by binding arbitration with the fire, nine-one-one, and police unions. Based on comparables from other jurisdictions, no matter what we can or can't do, someone can say, no, you will do this instead. So we lose a lot of that flexibility. The issue inside of this today is the Kelly days. I've been a staunch opponent of them since I came onto council. And inside of this, we give them another seven days off per year. Even though it saves money versus giving them other reimbursement, I know they've wanted this for a long time. I'd love another seven days off a year as well. But outside of their current vacation and other type of days off, this one has always just bothered me enormously and hence the reason that I'll be in opposition to the staff recommendation today.
All right, is there further discussion? All right, hearing no call for further discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries with Counselor Nanki voting no. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business and in your packets are a number of information reports. Are there any questions or discussion on information reports? Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that the city council hold a public hearing on Item Seven A.
Second.
Madam Mayor, this is an issue that has preoccupied one of my neighborhood groups for some time. I haven't heard their discussion. All I can tell is that it seems to go along because at every neighborhood group meeting I attend, it comes up. I have been asked, since this was approved, to request a hearing. The neighborhood group believes, as far as I can tell, that the decision was, number one, the wrong one. I think that would go without saying. They would like to talk to the council about it. Number two, that there may have been information that came into the city after the public hearing was held. Has them very concerned. And I think it's a chance for us also, as we've done one other time, to hear about cell towers. It's a major issue coming up in front of us here in the near future. And I think it's helpful for us to just get used to this issue, learn more about it. So if you can't support it for any other reason, I'd like you to support it for its educational opportunities.
All right, is there further discussion? All right, it was moved by Counselor Bennett and I believe seconded by Counselor Clem. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I believe Counselor Clausen has an item to discuss.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions for staff on Item Seven D, which is what we heard some residents of Ward Fork having questions about. I'm not sure who the questions are to, so I'll just state them and we'll go from there. How about that? So one, I just want to be sure that I'm understanding the conditions correctly regarding the stormwater requirements. It appears that the stormwater requirements, that all detention volumes have to be based on hundred-year design storm as opposed to fifty-year for standard.
Correct.
Just want to be sure I'm clear on that.
Yeah, again, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. That is correct, counselor, and I highlighted it in the report earlier. And it's on page one of the Tentatives of Division Plaid Approval. So it's basically one, two, three, page four in your packet. It's Condition Six, under additional UGA requirements, the last sentence, "All stormwater detention volumes shall be based on a hundred-year design storm."
Thank you. My second question is on Condition Thirteen. There's a statement, "Obtain tree conservation plan approval." What's involved in that? I don't know.
Good evening, I'm Glenn Gross, the interim community development director. A tree conservation plan is required for all subdivision approvals. And it's a plan that will show a minimum of twenty-five percent of the trees to be retained. All significant trees under the tree ordinance, such as an Oregon white oak of a certain size, shall be preserved as well. The tree plan is being reviewed at the same time as the subdivision, or has been reviewed at the same time as the subdivision. This condition is intended to just make sure that it's final-approved prior to final plaid approval.
And is that an administrative decision?
It's an administrative decision, yes.
Okay, and twenty-five percent minimum retention of existing trees is the code?
That's the minimum. If someone proposes to go below that, there are special findings that have to be made. In this case...
Yeah, thirty-seven.
They're preserving, they're over thirty percent.
And what about the one white oak that's going to be cut down because it's in a building envelope? Greater than twenty-four inches. I'm assuming there's remedies for that somehow?
I'm going to ask Brian Colburn to come up and speak to that, if I may.
Brian Colburn, Planning Division. The one white oak is actually within a street alignment and it's along that north line, but it's not behind the homes of the individuals who've come and testified.
Okay, but obviously in code, there's remedies for taking down that heritage tree somehow?
Yeah, it's not a heritage tree. It is, it's an Oregon white oak, so it'd be classified as a significant tree. And that is allowed because it's necessary for a street connection to the north.
Okay, I follow. All right, thank you. Yeah, just a statement. I don't see any cause to pull this. I think everything is very straightforward and it's by the book. And I appreciate staff's work on this. I mean, obviously, a hundred and twenty-nine pages went into this. There's been a lot of effort. So, thank you.
All right, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the, any other significant white oaks on the northern boundary of the property, they would all be required to be retained then, correct?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I would like to note that Item Seven G is the SEDCOR two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen annual report. We have two guests tonight here, Byron Hendricks, who is the previous chair of SEDCOR, and Chad Freeman, who is president of SEDCOR. And I believe that one or both of you are going to make some comments.
I'll start. Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff. I'm Byron Hendricks, past chair of the Strategic Economic Development Corporation of Marion and Polk Counties. As you know, SEDCOR. I would tell you that it's been a great year of accomplishment for SEDCOR and it's made possible by your continued investment in the interests that's shared by many in the community, and that's business development and job creation. We worked hard through this last year to revise our bylaws, to make sure we got more board involvement in our process. We expanded our executive council to make sure that there could be great representation, not only from our major funders, City Assalem being one, Marion County being another, Polk County to a lesser degree, and then our members that comprise the budget of roughly seven hundred thousand dollars in job creation. The money's spent wisely. We had a great hire. Now, well, just short by thirty-eight days of a year in Chad Freeman. Chad, as you've seen, and I know you've had the opportunity to see his action and activities, has worked well to partner with community members for the goal of job creation. I'm going to let him share the numbers and the accomplishments with you. I would tell you that they're quite substantial. And I'm proud of what the work the board did in getting this activity together. I can feel confident I can stand here in front of you and say that your money has been extremely well invested. I appreciate the support. I appreciate the support you've offered to an important organization to be able to continue growing jobs in Marion and Polk County. I'm happy to entertain any questions or turn it over to Chad.
I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Hendricks. Byron Hendricks has been an outstanding leader in our community, and so many times over the years, I've seen you step up to head one organization or another. I remember the United Way Drive and the years that you spent with that and other organizations. And I just want to make a really public thank you to you as you helped SEDCOR, the board, navigate through the very, very well-done planning process, so that you were really strategic in the search for the new president, and I know that you had a lot to do with that. I want to thank our city manager, Linda Norris, as well, because I know that she put time and energy and effort and brought staff support. Courtney Knox was a tremendous support to that effort as well. And I just didn't want this moment to go by without being able to recognize Byron Hendricks and all the work that you've done and your faithful service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and certainly it really is very small in comparison to the work that all of you do on behalf of all the citizens of Salem. Thank you for your service.
Very kind. And now Chad Freeman, who is almost one year on the job, and many people would think if they look at the list and hear the reports, which I've had a chance because of being on the board, to hear that maybe you'd actually been working for the last three or four years. So welcome aboard. We're pleased.
If I could. You know, it has been a stressful year.
What are you doing?
You'll notice that he came prepared. Chad has a three-and-a-half-month-old son.
I found that for the first time, although I do thank you for the comments that it feels like forever that I've been here. That's very nice, too. Mayor and council, I wanted to-
You're welcome.
Echo Byron's comments about the great support from the city, both from the folks in this room as well as from the staff. It really has been a theme around partnership, both with the city, with SEDCOR, with the public, with the private, and with the surrounding, the region that we really are a part of. Almost coming in on my year, 38 days from a year, wanted to point out just some highlights from the report in front of you. One, when you look at it in terms of how we've really looked in terms of quantifying this as in terms of total investment, we're looking at companies that have estimated, invested an estimated $64 million in the last year, which ended July. It includes many projects that you're familiar with. We've got the Norpac expansion, who coupled with a well-known Oregon company called Henningson Cold Storage, as well as Garmin, just to name a few, which are the big ones. But also, we've got smaller companies that are investing. Willamette Valley Fruit, finding a creative way to invest. West Salem Machine Shop, Don Ponchos. I think that really speaks to some of the focus that's been on for a little while now, on helping these local companies expand and recognizing that it is our local companies that are going to help carry us out of this recession. I think the other part of those, the $64 million, also represents an estimated, an over of an estimated 800 jobs of new and retained jobs for this region. I just think that that's a very powerful number when I think about how do you impact, how do you measure those impacts? It's pretty positive as we look forward. The city as well, I think it's important for folks to know really the investment that's been made by this group on that, not only on time, commitment, and teamwork, but the enterprise zone as well. $45 million, I think, was the actual number, was closer to $46 million, excuse me, of estimated investment that's been covered by the enterprise zone. These are important dollars because those really enable companies to make that last step, and many of these projects were close, and they just needed that support and that little push, and I think the enterprise zone really helped that, recognizing it's a short-term project that helps insight a long-term investment. So it is through the partnership and the teamwork that's in this room, I think we've really have started to move the ball and look forward to a good next year, next couple of years, as the investments there, the infrastructure's there, and we're really looking forward to it. Open for any questions as well?
Wonderful, thank you. Counselor Tesler?
I'd like to add a few more names to your list. How about Saniam Brewing Company, Gilgamesh, Rain Brewing Company, Wandering Angus, Salem Ale Works, the numerous wineries close to Salem, Red Hawk Vineyards? All of those industries are just taken off, and it's kind of interesting because the other day I was in Eugene, and I was at Ninkasi, and Ninkasi has become an empire. I mean, two guys working out of a garage. And so when I go to Saniam Brewing Company and Gilgamesh and the other places, it's going to be a Ninkasi here, too. There will be more expansion of breweries and wineries, and people love it. Those places are packed. I mean, half my agency drinks at Saniam now. So it's, you know, I just, it's on the cusp. It's on the cusp. They're in a weird little manufacturing area now, but they're grateful to be there. They're going to take off, you know? We're going to have another Ninkasi here, too, in Salem, and it's going to be great. So I just, I know you're thinking about these things, too, but just some more homegrown small businesses coming up, and I hope we have many more. I'd love to see 10 breweries over there. It'd be great.
I think those, as you pointed out, those homegrown folks starting new ideas really are going to help push us, and I thank you for your agency's support of that as well.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you for sharing this information. I think this is the first year since I've sat on this council that I've heard such a diverse report from SEDCOR, and just the way you're kind of, you have your hands in a lot of different pots, and you're really, it just feels really robust, and it feels like we really are kind of on the right track with both, you know, the large business expansions as well as the small business. I think those complement each other really well, and I just want to thank you for kind of taking that direction because I think that that's going to really help as our community turns its economy around, and it seems like it's been a little bit slower than some other areas. So this is really great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the investment that you guys have continued to make in that.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the Mill Creek Corporate Center, what are we actually hearing from people? Number one, as we still have what we have, and it'd be nice to hear what people are saying about it, where there may be shortcomings. And is there anything we, as a council, can do to help staff, to do something to help move people in there faster? Because if we can get behind something, staff will just be doing it, and I can see them moving already.
A great question, and I really think Mill Creek is really is the key in terms of some of the future development opportunities and can help drive, when I'm really positive thinking, it can drive not only our region, but really the state in terms of the opportunity that's there. And when you look at it, it's got such a strong market position on I-5, large footprint. And the other piece that's really been clear to me lately is just how ready that is to go. I think recognizing the amount of work that's been done on that in the last five years specifically, I think there's a committee that's been working, a great partnership between the city and the state, getting that ready and really understanding, A, the investment that's needed to get that ready to go, B, making sure that you understand fully what it is and how to help and how to work with developers. And the other part of it is really, the last ingredient is really coming online in terms of as the market is absorbing some of the other real estate that's out there. That is, it's taken the existing buildings, and the leads that we're getting are much more geared towards, or are beginning to get geared more towards raw land, whereas a year ago, they were almost all, "We're looking for a building, it needs to be X square feet." But now we're seeing, we like a building, but we're really interested, too, in doing our own development. And we've had more interest in the last month, or as much in the last month as we did in the first nine months of this year. That is, during July, we think we had five requests for proposals, a request for information, whereas we'd had five or six in the previous month. I think that as the economy warms up and continues to expand, we'll just continue to see that. Frankly, got a call on Mill Creek today. How do we do it? How do we access this? And it really is going to build on each other. I think the other piece of that that's really strong, when we're talking to companies, is that we're able to really showcase the work that's already been done. One, it is, if you've got land, if you need 20 acres, you need 5 acres, you need 100 acres, we've got it. But in addition, you've got major multinational companies that have done their due diligence that can vouch for it. This is a good place to be, and I think that's a very compelling conversation as well.
But we don't need to do anything else from our-
I would love to, what I'd like to ask is just a little bit of patience. Give us, next year at this, if we're still at the same point, let's have that conversation.
Okay, cool.
I think we're in a great spot in recognizing a lot of the work that's been done.
Excellent, thanks.
And Counselor, the council's already done a lot. As you know, we're just finishing the Almsville Highway. The water line looping is complete. We just certified the wetlands, which is a national project, the first, the only one, I think, of its kind, and we're in construction on the new water reservoir. So all of those things are going to be really important as we go, and you added an enterprise zone to some additional land. So all of those are very good tools, and we're starting to see the difference that is made, I think.
Just impatient a little bit.
Wonderful. Other comments or questions by counselors? Well, again, thank you very much. We appreciate your report and your hard work, and keep at it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're here to support you, absolutely. All right. Our next order of business are ordinances. Would the recorder, does the recorder introduce the ordinances? Thank you. I don't envy you this long list of numbers, so you're going to have to read. All right.
Ordinance Bill number 3113 relating to land use, creating new provisions, amending SRC 41.150, 41.160, 41.190, 50.255, 50.260, 65.020, 65.070, 61.160, 75.020, 72.086, 73.260, 75.020, 75.160, 76.040, 77.160, 77.120, 78.040, 78.180, 79.020, 79.040, 86.015, 86.110, 102.040, 215.005, 010, 015, 025, 035, 040, 045, 050, 055, 22.005, 22, excuse me, 220.010, 225.005, 225.010, 230.085, 240.005, 240.010, 245.005, 250.005, 20, I'm sorry, 255.005, 010, 050, 065, 265.005, 010, 015, 020, 270.005, 270.015, 300.010, 020, 100, 120, 210, 300, 410, 420, 500, 510, 520, 600, 610, 620, 710, 940, 990, 900.200, 210, 235. Renumbering and amending SRC 65.010, 020, 030, 050, 080, 082, 090, 100, 110, 115, 120, 125, 135, 140, 160, 170, 300, 330, 350, 370, 450, 500, 505, 525, 560, 565, 590, 595, 605, 610, 300.830, 850, 860, 70. SRC 41.150, 41.160, 41.190, 50.255, 50.260, 65.020, 65.070, 61.160, 75.020, 72.086, 73.260, 75.020, 75.160, 76.040, 77.160, 77.120, 78.040, 78.180, 79.020, 79.040, 86.015, 86.110, 102.040, 215.0005, 010, 015, 025, 035, 040, 045, 050, 055, 22.005, 22, excuse me, 220.010, 225.005, 225.010, 230.085, 240.005, 240.010, 245.005, 250.005, 20, I'm sorry, 255.005, 010, 050, 065, 265.005, 010, 015, 020, 270.005, 270.015, 300.010, 020, 100, 120, 210, 215, 120, 130, 410, 420, 440, 510, 515, 520, 530, 540, 160, 300, 830, 850, 880, 880, 590, and repealing SRC Chapters 63, 68, 69, pardon me, 69, 80, 110, 111, 113, 116, 118, 119, 121, 122, 120, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, 137, 138, 140, 141, 143, 144, 145, 146, 147, 148, 149, 150, 151, 152, 153, 154, 155, 156, 157, 158, 160, 145, 200, SRC 76.170, Figure 76A, SRC 77.150, SRC 20, sorry, 230.101, and that certain document entitled "The City of Salem Development Design Handbook."
Thank you very much. Yes. All right. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the City Council refer Ordinance Bill Number 31-13, adopting the remaining chapters of the UDC to the planning commission for a public hearing and recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Yeah.
Did everyone say aye? Was that right? All right. And no one said nay? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Ordinance Bill Number 3313. Would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 3313, granting a telecommunications franchise to Data Vision Communications LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And would the recorder please introduce the Third Ordinance Bill Number 3513?
Ordinance Bill Number 3513, approving a street name change from Learning Lane Northeast to Aguilar's Court Northeast.
Thank you. And is there a motion? Counselor Thomas? Would you like to do the motion for this ordinance bill?
Staff recommendation.
Thank you. It's been, thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Counselor Tesler? Motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
And now, we will move to second readings. Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Would the recorder please introduce those? Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Yes, I'll be reading, second reading and taking a roll call vote after that.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Ordinance Bill Number 2713, relating to certain businesses and vocations operated within
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
the city of Salem, amending and renumbering sections, creating new sections, repealing
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 3013, relating to Salem Housing Code, repealing SRC 59.002 through SRC 59.990, creating new sections, SRC 59.001 through SRC 59.990, and declaring an emergency. Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 3013, relating to Salem Housing Code, repealing SRC 59.002 through SRC 59.990, creating new sections, SRC 59.001 through SRC 59.990, and declaring an emergency. Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 3013, relating to Salem Housing Code, repealing SRC 59.002 through SRC 59.990, creating new sections, SRC 59.001 through SRC 59.990, and declaring an emergency. Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, engrossed ordinance bill Number 2913, relating to multiple family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
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 Aye.
Counselor Bennett?